The following program is sponsored by The Greek, Ely's Radio Shack Dealer, F-570 Altman in downtown Ely, and brought to you as a public service by Georgetown Media in Ely, Nevada. Regional Planning Commission Meeting, April 19th, 2023.
Always. Some things we forget, but I don't.
Following the order of the meeting, the Regional Planning Commission, April 19th. And, George, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we begin with opening public comment. Will be for all matters, both on and off the agenda. It will be limited to three minutes per person. Commission reserves the right to reduce the time of limit. Hours limit the total time allowed for public comment. Comments during discussion items may not be accepted from the general public. We may prohibit comments of the content if the comments are woefully disruptive at the meetings, being slanderous, offensive, inflammatory, irrational, or mounting to personal attacks and interfering with the rights of other speakers. So have that in mind, let us open for public comment.
Carrie Pintar, 1417 Mills Street, 1049 South Bell Avenue. I'm here tonight to address this commission in regards to the actions taken at your meeting on March 20th, specifically the rezoning of parcel from R100 and C3 to RM50 for 5D Development. The process or lack thereof which happened at the last meeting has left a lot of unanswered questions and concerns. While the damage is done now in the future, this board needs to request a zoning change in a public hearing format. We need to establish something that can be done so that we all have a fair chance as the audience to be given the same opportunity as you, to see what's being presented and ask our questions which are relevant to that hearing. Such an opportunity would have allowed us to ask those questions. Unfortunately, that was not the case, as 5D was less than forthcoming in their endeavor to educate all of us in regards to their plan. Per your agenda dated March 20th, the application of reclassification was only for APN parcel 00148220, which per the assessor's website is owned solely by 5D Development. Jason Roywood swore on the attached application that he was an owner of the property, which is false. He and his wife consequently, who live in Park City, Utah, should not have been allowed to apply and present to the commission on Mr. Diamond's behalf. As such, some of you commission members relied heavily on the Roywood reputation on past projects and thought it was sufficient to give them the green light for this rezoning request. You gave them carte blanche and took them for their word that they will provide expansive green space, use local contractors, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, when this can't be farther from the truth. What protections do we have if they don't follow through with what they indicated? They didn't use local contractors on the Holiday Inn, they didn't maintain ownership of the property, selling it in for a tidy profit once it was built. So who's going to say history won't repeat itself? Mr. Roywood stated at last week's city council meeting, he's invested over $1 million in engineering fees for this project, yet the renderings provided to you after the close of the public hearing were only concepts presented on a $2 science fair board. So where's the disconnect here and who's lying? The problem that I noted with the concept, once I was allowed to finally see them, you approved a boundary line adjustment for a three-acre parcel to an adjustment of 3.75 acres. The project summary shows the concept with a site area of plus or minus 4.1 acres. So they begin, they're already a third of an acre short. Next, they neglected to place a 60-foot road in the turnabout into the complex, which directly overtakes the first building as well as part of that expansive green space. So it looks as though, again, they're another quarter to a third of an acre short on their proposed concept board. In total, that's a half to two-thirds of an acre short to accomplish 96 apartments and 166 parking spaces. So I would ask you all, where's this space going to come from? It'll be from that expansive green space which was supposed to be intended to buffer between the apartments, the residents of Bell Avenue, as well as a place for the dogs to do the business.
Thank you, Carrie. For public comments. Okay. And in mind, we will close public comment section and we'll move to item A. Discussion for possible action approval of both a city and county home occupation permit applicant is Sheilah Manning. DBA Sheilah's creations property address is 103177 Street East, Ely, Nevada, 89301. Type of business is crafting. Do you want to go forward or table it?
I guess I'll just table it.
Is it necessary that they are? This is just a crafting.
It's not required that you table it.
I might go ahead in case we have any questions.
George?
I have a question. It doesn't show ownership unless I missed it.
Ownership of the house, the residence?
No. The application specifically states either ownership or permission from the landlord. We have neither one in the packet. Also, the person is applying for a city and county home occupation, when the only home occupation they need isn't the county, that's the primary residence, unless they're going to have another residence within the city. We're hitting them twice, and I don't think that's fair. Should be only one and not pay two fees for two different locations. All she needs for the city of Ely is a business license. That's it.
I didn't realize there are two addresses on here listed.
No, is that what you're saying?
It's on your agenda. Approval of both the city and county home occupation permit.
East 77th Street out.
That lasts for heights and so it was just one location. He's just saying that it's requiring the home occupation permit and the city, but that wouldn't be required. I think the city gave it to me because they would be selling and doing business within the city of Ely limits, which they require a home occupation as well as their business license.
Where's their home occupation in the city then?
Yeah, I'd say I don't know why they would do a home occupation. It's like, I really charge on that one.
So, yeah, it's a good point.
I won't support two. I'll support one.
It would be the home occupation for the county only, I believe, because she lives in the county, not the city.
So if we were to table this item, would you get that possibly corrected and presented?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I hear a motion to table it.
I'll make a motion to table it.
Okay. Do you want to hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor of motion to table, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The item is tabled. Okay, we move on to item B. Discussion for possible action, the approval of a boundary line adjustment. The applicants are Joseph M. Carrick, Dorothy Carrick, Joseph M. Carrick Jr., Janice Maxwell, Evelyn Terry, Evelyn Terry, and Julie Linell. Somebody properties are 1108 Avenue G, APN 002-102-12, and 116 Avenue G, APN 002-102-11 in East Ely, Nevada. Purpose of this map is to adjust the boundary line between the two properties.
Mr. Chair, NRS statute 281A.420 requires me to disclose the conflict of interest in the matter before this body affects my pecuniary interest as to my husband's company. Our base in the area has been hired to do this boundary line adjustment. So I conclude that in the independence of judgment of a reasonable person in my situation would material effect be affected by this relationship, and because this is a clear case of disqualifying conflict of interest, I am going to be abstaining from voting on this map.
Good luck, you, Kenneth.
Good evening, Dr. Roser, Surveyor, representing the Carrick boundary line adjustment. The boundary line adjustment is going to take the lot into the existing use conformity other than, they wanted the line exactly on the fence, but if I put it exactly on the fence, they wouldn't meet their five-foot setback where the building goes in and do to sell. So I moved it over five feet away from the house, which is fairly close to the fence, but not exactly on the fence.
Yeah.
And so, the use has been in line with this boundary line adjustment for several years. This is just fixing the legal portion of the use.
I was curious as to what the deal was going to do by the properties, and everything's pretty snug.
You'd be correct. I believe they were allowed to build the fence there one time, but the previous owner or the deceased owner did not want to sell that additional property, I think is what the backstory was on it.
Okay.
So more or less just basically getting it legally to what it essentially is.
Correct. We stood the line over as far as we could to get it in compliance with existing use without encroaching on any setbacks. Both lots still maintain a size that is adequate for the zoning.
I didn't have any other questions.
He just answered my concern that the lots still meet the width, right?
No, minimum. I don't know that there's a minimum width, there's a minimum square footage requirement in that zoning. We don't have too many minimum width requirements.
Thank you, Liz. Well, I would like to approve the boundary line.
Okay, we have a motion to approve from Leah. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Do her seconds. And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And Kenneth abstains? And all those in opposing? None in opposition, it passes.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, Liz.
Okay. Chairman, the next item, agenda item C, is that what I'm going to do next? Yes. That needs to be tabled so it can be properly noticed. Okay. My recommendation is to table it so it can be properly.
So item C?
Yeah, so before opening the item, you want to have a vote to table it based on council's recommendation so it can be properly noticed. Okay, I was wondering about that.
I'll just move to approve tabling this item C until we get it.
Properly noticed.
Properly noted.
Okay. Yeah, okay, we have a motion to table item C as both C, item one and C2. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, George, seconds. All those in favor of tabling item C1 and 2, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, item C is tabled. Okay, we move on to item D. Public hearing for the consideration of a proposed application for a variance of property located in East Ely, Nevada. Applicant Michael Green wishes to place a new 10,072 square foot manufactured home on permanent foundation on this property. This deviates from the minimum manufactured home size of 1,200 square foot required in chapter 12-5-3 subsection D of the Ely City Code ordinance 635. Subject property address and original location is 1167 Avenue G, APN 002-068-07.
I heard 10,072. On the square footage, you said 10,072?
Yeah, 1,072. It says here.
So the correction is that it's a 1,072 square foot manufactured home?
Yeah. Which is roughly 125 square feet below what is required for minimum.
The existing property has a fairly new metal building on it, which is set in the back. So the length of my building needs to be no more than 40 feet for me to get a driveway back to the metal building, for which is my garage. So that's where we come up with the square footage.
So in order to meet the setbacks, you can't do larger than that? And to get your driveway?
No, then I won't have a driveway to get back to the already existing metal building that's back there. It's a fairly new metal building. It'll pretty much take the whole part of the property out.
We have several of the same issues in our agenda. I can see, no problem, that I can think of that we shouldn't allow that.
Right. Yeah, I'm all for it. So, I haven't seen any issues. Building Department recognized appeal, and there's no issues regarding your request. So I would move to approve.
We're in public hearing, I won't comment on that.
Oh, am I talking again?
Yeah. This is a public hearing.
Sorry.
I want to ask this board, I think this is great, that somebody wants to bring in manufactured housing. Mr. Hadreen has done every due diligence that he has. The problem is, is this board needs to take this back to the city and ask for the city to reamend that code. There's no reason that people should have to come before this board to ask to put manufactured housing in. This is, if this is a standard-sized trailer manufactured housing, it should be allowed to come in. That needs to be addressed in the city code, to be amended, to be less than 1,200 square feet minimum, because that is, we've got to have housing in this community. These gentlemen and this lady are trying to bring their own house in, we need to be able to support that. That's more affordable than what I'm getting on Bell Avenue at $2,000 a month. I'm not going to be off of that for a really long time for a one-bedroom. I just can't get off of it. But I don't think it's fair that everyone has to come before this board in order to get their request approved, when obviously 1,072 square feet must be a standard size. And I think that the city needs to look to amend that code to include that, so that these individuals don't have to wait for a month, or six weeks, or however long it takes for this to be noticed and agendaed, and them to proceed forward every time that they want to do something to improve our community.
As I see it, this is a variance.
Yeah.
What we're talking about?
Because we're still in the public hearing part.
Can I say something? Please?
Yes, we're at the portion where the public's allowed to kind of, yeah, this is the public hearing section.
Sorry.
That's okay.
I've gone to other hearings. I want to say.
You're naming it?
My name is Teresa Cicliano.
Can you get the tilt of Michael a little bit, your weight? Here you go.
Hello. Can you hear me now? I actually live on a lot right behind her, that she's trying to get the variance for. So I am ditto for whatever she said, because I think it's madness that I have to come back next month just to give my support for her manufactured home. Right now, it's a dirt lot. It sits right by the cemetery. We're filling in the ditch, thank you. But I'm with her. It's insane that we're coming back. I'm going to say the city, a couple months ago, maybe even six months ago, toyed with the idea of tiny homes for more affordability, for the nurses and doctors that come in, and they were going to put it right by the hospital. So I don't see the issue. I'm with her. Why can't you amend the size to maybe 800 square feet? Then it wouldn't be such a problem. I wouldn't be coming back next month, and she wouldn't be coming back next month. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any more public input?
Well, thank you, Mr. Green. You explained yourself what you're looking to do.
And so we'll close the public hearing on that. We'll take it to item D, part two. Discussion for possible action. Approval of a proposed application for a variance of property located in Ely, Nevada. Applicant Michael Green wishes to place a new 1,072 square foot manufactured home on a permanent foundation on his property. This deviates from the minimum manufactured home size of 1,200 square feet required in chapter 12-5-3 subsection D, Ely City Code ordinance 635. Subject property address and original location is 1167 Avenue G, APN 002-068-07. Okay, we'll open that up for public discussion.
Yeah, for board discussion. For the board discussion.
Yeah.
All right. I always get it mixed up. I don't know why, but, yeah, like I said, I'm all for it, and is that something we can entertain? I also agree that, you know, maybe some updates, you know, to the code on this.
That's not on the agenda.
So I appreciate the comments made. Definitely something to consider, but the whole, I mean, if you were to just reduce that significantly as far as the square footage, now you've, I mean, it was implemented for a reason at some point. Mr. Green's request makes a lot of sense. He bought a property with an existing building that he has to work around. But then you're going to have single-wide trailers coming in if you reduce that square footage. Now you've taken an area of town that's, you know, been zoned with certain requirements. It's been a place for a long time.
Because it can be placed on foundation, I think that's the big difference.
Sure. Yeah, I guess we're not addressing the issues as far as changing that at this point, but as far as approving this, I mean, I do support it, because you've got a property that's going to be tough to put a residence on without approving that. But I do think they need to be looked at, you know, on an individual basis. I don't think all of them will just fall into that, sure, let's just change this square footage requirement.
Right.
But as far as this agenda item, I do think that we should consider bringing it up.
Okay, George?
I'm going to support this, but I'm also concerned that the city's been dragging its feet for months in regards to tiny homes. And as a longtime resident, I don't want tiny homes all over this community. I just don't. There's a place for them, but they haven't identified that, and the only way you're going to get any kind of tax base is to build a home of some real square footage. There are properties that are strange in size or location. I don't have a problem with that, and that's why this board listens to it. But if you're concerned about any of those issues, Leah, I suggest you get on the city council. I only have three minutes, and then they cut me off. So I'll be seeing you the next meeting.
I agree with you on that, George, on the tiny home situation. I've been pushing for that for a while.
Okay, let's stay on topic for agenda item here.
Yeah, so, main point of this, this is for the application for the variance on the property.
Motion approved.
I'll second.
Okay. George, it is seconded by Kenneth. All those in favor of item D-2, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Thank you.
Okay, and we move on to item E. Public hearing for the consideration of a proposed application for a conditional special use permit on the property located in Ely, Nevada. Owner is Lemich Family Trust, Michael Deloris Lemich trustees. Applicant is Golden Gate Petroleum, represented by Dennis O'Keefe. They are requesting the permit for a proposed RV park on 1.
Chairman, chairman. It's golden, the applicant is Golden Gate Petroleum slash Dennis O'Keefe, represented by Reeves.
Okay, that's not spelled out here.
On E1?
Yeah.
What is your shot?
Says Golden Gate Petroleum, represented by Dennis O'Keefe.
I have the same.
Okay, is that?
It's Mr. O'Keefe or Mr. Reeves here?
We have.
Oh.
I'm done.
Yeah, how is that to read?
Is she?
I think she muted herself.
It's supposed to read Golden Gate Petroleum slash Dennis O'Keefe, represented by Reeves and Associates. Reeves is our architect and designer.
Thank you. So that's how it'll read. The applicant is Golden Gate Petroleum slash Dennis O'Keefe, represented by Reeves and Associates, period.
Okay, you're going to make that change?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's on the agenda item that was distributed when I received my agenda item, so it's a typographical error, it's appearing on yours, so we'll correct that right now.
Okay.
So you'll start with they are requesting.
They're requesting the permit for a proposed RV park on 1.5 acres with 20 RV connections. Top lot, dog park, and kiosk check-in as a part of an overall development. Subject property address and original location is Township 16 North, Range 63 East, Section 11, APN 002-042-08, north of the Nevada Northern Railway tracks which cross Highway 93, east of Golf Course Drive, and west of Highway 93. Okay, public hearing on this? Anyone wish to come forward?
Hi, up there, Teresa again. I'm not going to bash you, but I am going to bring up something that you brought up a minute ago. I don't want all these single-wide trailers coming in when I said, hey, how about we reduce that size to 800 square feet? Is that not what this is going to be, a bunch of trailers?
An RV park, I don't think this is permanent residence.
If I'm not mistaken, you can run it for up to 30 days, and then you have to move off for a little bit, and you can come back. But again, it's going to be single-wide trailers in and out. The RV park, then you just said, I don't want that.
Well, I didn't want it. I'm just saying that that would be an issue, but again, for different agendas.
I think you guys ought to maybe allow a little bit smaller so we can build the community. Right now, nobody can afford the rent. There's no place to rent, George, when you want to rent. They're flipping roach motels all over the place. Just a little bit of an open mind. This has nothing to do with you. I support you 100%, by the way. I just, you happen to be able to bring up right away. I just, you happen to be able to bring up right away. Sorry.
Something to consider, but.
And how do you consider it and put it on the agenda? Because that was one of the things you guys said. It's not on the agenda. We're not going to play. How do you put it on the agenda?
See the secretary.
And who would that be?
Lady is on your opposite side.
After the meeting, do you have scheduled times to do this? Help a girl out here. We'll talk after.
Go to the next city council meeting also.
You know I go, George.
I didn't see you. I film everything.
I know, George, but I see you.
Okay, no arguing. Thanks.
My name's Dennis Marsh. I have the property right across the street from this proposed RV park. As far as I could see, I don't see any problems at all. Probably end up with a lot less dust at my place and the worst thing that could happen is my property value would go up. Just going on the record to say I have no problem with it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
If I might for just a moment address the first concern, which is making sure that this development is not for single wide mobile homes. It is specifically for motorhomes for people who are traveling up and down the state and through our state for them to connect for a maximum of three days and then they are required to be off-site for seven days before they can reconnect. It's designed specifically for travelers coming through Ely and, you know, the snowbirds as well as the summer hunting season. It's designed for temporary RV parking.
Ma'am, could you state your name for the record?
I'm sorry. My name is Norma K.I.L.B.O.U.R.N. I work with Ted Golden Gate and I am their CFO.
Thank you.
My name is Sandy Marino, and she pretty much answered my concern. It was my understanding it was for travelers. And if it's for travelers, there definitely is a need for that. We have a friend who works at the one down the street and she tells us she's constantly just answering the phone and having to turn people away. And I don't think this new business is going to hurt any of the existing businesses in town. And there is a property down below us between D and C, and they kind of wanted to do something like that. But I think the concern was that it would be more for construction workers and stuff that would turn into more permanent things. And I kind of appreciate you not allowing them to do that because it is a residential neighborhood and we're trying to clean things up. But I think what she's proposing, it's definitely needed, and that's a very good spot for it because there isn't a lot of residents right next door. You won't be hearing the trailers coming and going and that kind of thing. And I just, I'm in favor of it. And I'm also in favor of allowing these smaller homes to come in. And I realize there are separate issues, but Ely's a very unique town with a lot of unique problems. And so we appreciate your due diligence, researching and trying to help people that want to move forward and let's get this town moving again. Let's get some businesses in here instead of being stuck with the same old stuff. And, you know, for a long time, a lot of businesses weren't allowed to come into this town. And I kind of maybe see a little light at the end of the tunnel. There's still some fight with some of them, but I think this is one that would help get the ball rolling. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Mike Lemich. I had a previous owner of this property. I think you're getting a little misconstrued on trailer parks and RV parks. There's a tremendous need for RV trailers. There are people that are traveling public or the playgrounds of Las Vegas. Recreational trailers is what we're talking about. We're not talking about permanent homes. A need is there to facilitate these trailers. And if you drive up and down Main Street, maybe get them off Main Street and in a place where they'll be safe and the public will be safe as well. The overall proposal that they're making at this is going to groom that entity. It's going to be a great asset and they're going to be a great neighbor and make a huge profit if you shoot the city of Indian White Pine.
Thank you.
Do we have any more, any more public input on this particular item? He will close it for public input and will open for item E, part two. Discussion for possible action. Approval of a considered proposed application for conditional special use permit on property located in Ely, Nevada. Owner is Lemich Family Trust, Michael Dolores Lemich, trustees. Applicant is, how would I phrase that again? Golden Gate Petroleum slash Dennis O'Keefe. Dennis O'Keefe.
Represented by Reeves and Associates.
Represented by Reeves and Associates. They are requesting the permit for proposed RV park on 1.5 acres with 20 RV connections, top lot, dog park, and kiosk check-in as part of an overall development. Subject property address and or general location is Township 16 North, Range 63 East, Section 11, APN 002-042-08, north of the Nevada Northern Railway railroad tracks which cross Highway 93, east of Golf Course Drive, and west of Highway 93. So open that up for discussion by the board.
I think the location would be a good place. I'm a better of this.
I think it's a perfect location.
Yeah, it is. Really won't have any concerns.
Yeah. It's a terrific idea. So any, anybody have any input on that?
I moved it. We kept it.
Okay, we have a motion to accept that from Rod and do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Leah seconds? Let's put this to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Condition of use permit? Passes. And we're closing public hearings and discussions, decisions. Going to item F. Discussion for possible action. Approval of minutes from Regional Planning Commission meeting held on March 15, 2023. I went through it until I was cross-eyed. I was starting to see things. I didn't see anything right off the bat. Anybody else here?
I read. I didn't see any problems. There was a spelling or two errors, but.
Well, I think it's, yeah, it finishes.
No?
I moved to approve it.
Okay.
Now second.
Okay. Can I move to approve the minutes and Leah seconds? All those in favor of approval of minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's your group. Okay, we shall move on to public comment.
That's like a bad penny. Terry McIntyre, 14 Mountain, 17 Mill Street, 1049 South Hill Avenue. Again, I'm still on your housing decision from last week. I'm going to add this council or this board to the list of housing failures even before that's built. I had a conversation with another landlord and told him what the proposed rent was for a one bedroom and his answer to me was, I should up my tenant's rent. That's all this is going to do by offering $2,000 a month for a one bedroom. And I can't even go back and comment on the DNA testing, the dog shit that's left in the green space because I just can't cope with that. That's the stupidest thing I've ever heard. However, perhaps what should be of interest to each and every one of you is the intimidation and threat tactics that were made to the Ely City Council last week by Mr. and Mrs. Boywood when consideration to change of ordinance to allow Pine West Development to come into Ely was presented. Mr. Boywood stated to the council, he has ceased further work with basin engineering on his proposed $50 million development of a Hampton Inn Hotel and Casino and up to 400 apartments. 400 apartments. This tracks with what we were told with 358 apartments and abandoning Cleve Drive. This small rezoning change was only the beginning and there's a much larger plan in the works. And you were only given the information relevant on a need-to-know basis. By using the smoke and mirrors tactics, you've now set a precedence indicating your willingness to change zoning retirements to the highest bidder. So good job. During public comment in one breath, J.C. stated that we cannot afford the half a hundred gaming machines provided by Pine West on the corner of Altman and Great Basin, but of course, we can support his hundred at the Hampton Inn. Mrs. Boywood again took to the podium to let us know that her and her family live and reside in our community, not, and stated that we'll lose 800,000 in hotel room taxes if they proceed not to move forward. To this, I say hooray. In my opinion, you can't have it both ways. It's good for 5D and White Pine Development, and it should be good for all to come in, including Pine West, so that provide competing services. Personally, I hope the city council grants Pine West requests and the Boywoods do pull their project because it's certainly of no benefit to me, my family, or now my decreased property value on Bell Avenue. So in closing, the irony in all this is not lost on me because on March 13th, I asked the county commission to keep the RPC rather than return control of these matters back to their respective boards, as I personally believe the county manager is trying to centralize control of all things White Pine County, which isn't in our best interest as a community. I believe an independent board comprised of six members coming together and making sound decisions to move Ely forward so we can begin to grow and prosper is a win-win for all. However, now in hindsight, I would respectfully ask the next time you go to screw the little guy that you provide KY jelly at the door. Thank you.
That's going to be hard to follow. Craig Peterson, building official. Jennifer, for the minutes, please just note that this was an explanation of section 12-53, the tiny homes thing. Manufactured houses that are placed outside of manufactured houses zones are the only ones that have a minimum square footage. The county's square footage minimum is 960, so it's a little different from the county or from the city. But it's also required to be multi-sectioned, put on a permanent foundation, and be new within six years. I'm happy to sponsor an ordinance dropping the square footage requirement to a little bit more of a reasonable level. But for Georgia and for anybody else on any other building lot within the city, you can build a house down to about 150 square foot per appendix queue of the IRC, which governs the tiny homes clearances. So just point of clarification. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry. Sandy Marino, one thing on the tiny homes. A lot of the houses in this town are smaller than the square footage you're looking at. So I don't understand why it's such a big deal to have, to allow smaller square footage. And I understand why you don't want a bunch of camp trailers in town, but I think that at some point it's kind of common sense. And I have to back up this lady at what happened at the last city council meeting. Very disheartening. Personally, I don't respond well to threats, so I don't know how the members of the city council are dealing with it. And not only what the gentleman said about removing his $50 million, it's like a little kid's having a temper tantrum. If I don't get what I want, I'm doing this. And I, from the short time we've been here, this is what we've heard about this town. Only a select few people run this town. And unfortunately, I'm going to have to agree with it because that's what I'm seeing. After the previous city council meeting that I attended, one of the people that spoke up, one of the very prominent business people in this town, told me that if they, the city council, don't make the right choice, they know who voted them in. I vote, other people vote. So I've heard two threats in regards to the West Pine Development. And I really don't understand why no one's thought of the point why a hundred machines at a diner-style restaurant, bar, casino is more dangerous than a whole hotel, restaurant, casino, originally what, 100 apartments? And then he stood up there in the meeting and changed the number to over 300? I didn't know that was allowed. Are you guys aware, is that allowed? Once you get permit for something, you can just change it and keep adding on? That I'm unfamiliar with. But the downtown section, for example, the Hotel Nevada, this is, this is going to kill them. It's not going to be a business over there on, behind the motel and where the old trailer park is. That's not what's going to kill the Nevada. It's going to be this big, big building up here below the La Quinta. And I don't understand why so many motel representatives sat there and said, we're against the Pine West project. It's a threat to us. But this other one isn't? So there's something else going on because it doesn't make sense to me. And thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. George Chatchis, private citizen, not representing anybody or any board. Mr. Chairman, I've attended RPC meetings at a council, county commission, you name it, for over 50 years. I don't know of anyone, any business that's been turned away. There are codes. They've had hearings. They were adopted. And just because someone comes by now and wants a change, they can ask for variance, but there's no guarantee in anything. So for someone to say, we turn things down? No, it's code. Until that code is changed, we shouldn't be pointing the finger to anybody. There was a comment made that a lot of hotels, casinos, motel owners were against certain property coming in. No. All I heard was, if you play under the same rules and regulations that we have, you're more than welcome to come in. And that includes the 50 rooms. Had that developer come to the city council when that was adopted a few years ago, different story. But it didn't happen. We have the regulation there and until that is changed, that's the way it is. Mr. Chairman, your co-chair has yet to address code violations that entered our area within 100 feet or so. I reported this to the commission numerous times. Leah, at one point, reported to me that she had submitted a concern more than once. I asked for a copy of anything she had submitted. To date, I have not received anything. Today, a person living in the same area called to report possible violations. I asked him to call the commission. He said he was afraid. We got a problem, folks. Needs to be addressed. Mr. Chairman, I'm requesting a copy of the letter memo or any other correspondence communicated to the city clerk, Jennifer Lee, to correct the encroachment of her fence on the city right, city sidewalk right-of-way, enforcing pedestrians and handicapped using wheelchairs onto a missing road and traffic. I've asked the city council for the same information, but no results as of today. Again, we either have rules and regulations or we don't, and we've got to stop discrimination. Here's a photo of 1033 Bell Avenue. It's been a long time. Needs to be addressed. I'm playing a curb better sidewalk according to code and I was taking a call to court and I hired an attorney. It was dropped, but I shouldn't be forced to hire an attorney when I meet city code and when I get permission from the city council. Mr. Chairman? Hey, I have some other requests and I'm not getting any answers, so we need to do something.
Okay, thanks, George. Do we have any more public comments?
My three minutes are up. I'm going to keep talking.
Thanks, Carrie. Okay, then with that, we will move on to close public comment and move on to adjournment. Do I hear a motion?
So move.
George moves to adjourn.
Second.
Can a second? All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned. Leah?
This has been a Georgetown production. George Chatchis reporting.